Good evening. I'd like to call the night's floor and ready schedule for the Village of Broadview Award. The record being placed at the starting date of the meeting at 7:31. Now, please have a little coffee.
Trustee Ed McMahon, absent. Trustee Benson, absent. Trustee Harper, here. President Jones, present. Trustee McGee, here. Trustee Morris, here. Trustee Brown-Arino, here. Can we all stand for the pledge of allegiance?
My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you have a moment, please? Thank you. Item number two, public comment.
My dear Smith is first.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Trustee Mayor, you have an item on the agenda regarding the appointee of Gerald Davis to the police pension board. And I need clarification. I thought there was, the police pension board was supposed to consist of five members, two appointed by you, two, three, one retired police officer, and two city police officers. So, I would like to understand how did this other individual is going to be appointed to the ward? And I also understand that you were making recommendations to the ward on individuals for the police pension board. I stated to you some time back in the presence of the regular building board meeting that I was addressing him being on the board, I have all my credentials because you do have to have credentials. I had heard rumor that it was said that I had stepped down. If I go to training and I am taking out time from my job to get these credentials, I don't see how there's any way that I could have stepped down. And if I had stepped down, I know better in this process that anything that is said or able has to be backed up and reviewed and reviewed. I've been speaking with you twice, Mayor, and I'd like to know how many candidates was considered for this next appointment? And the last thing is about the ordinance on the adult, let's go back here. I totally against it, and I'm saying it up front now before it started. And everyone remember, there's two villages that subliminally, they got their adult entertainment center. One was Stone Park, which is right next door to a Catholic church. And another one is out in the poolment area, Salem Baptist Church, James Meeks. They got one right down the street from their church. So, I'm just letting it be now. I am not in favor, no type of adult, I don't care which way you word it, because I understand when it comes to legal, you have ways that you can terminate, terminate, but in a body, in a whole spectrum, it turns out to be sex. And it's unfortunate that now we have ordinance on the board to relocate if anyone reconsidered. You took it up aside from Westchester, because you know they wouldn't have been able to that, put it in the area possibly where it's supposed to be, in a, how can I best explain it?
Minority.
But also, it's not, it's in an area that's out of the realm of homeowners, but it's still in our village. Our property value is already down. And if someone reads on, reads about this type of business in our village, how can we attract family in this, I mean, family environment? And that's all I can say. Thank you.
Amen.
First thing is, there was an error as the voice to the agenda. Item four is not supposed to be on the board tonight. This really is one of the few pension board members, and I trust you, Mayor.
Say it again, loud and clear.
I can't hear you.
I'm fine. I'm fine.
I will speak loudly.
Thank you.
I have work on us.
That's correct.
That's correct.
That's correct.
Item one, the agenda was mistakenly placed on the agenda. There is no current opening for police pension board, trustee. So therefore, when I go further questions on it, Mr. Mayor, that should have been on the agenda as of Wednesday. So basically, trustee Harper now is on the police pension board as Mr. President.
But they're going to be making comments right now about what they saw on the agenda. And I'm going to allow them to make all the comments if they feel necessary. They're resident, and to their point, I agree with them. And this is their, their town, their money and everything is about them. So, if they've got something that they want to say, I want them to say it so we can hear what they got to say, get the feedback, get it off their chest, get it out there. And if there's a concern about something, we're going to be addressing it through the course of tonight's meeting anyway. And they are more than welcome to stay to actually sort of what happens in tonight's board.
Thank you, because I do have some comments. Pressed at seventy, I'm a school board member of Linda. And when I seen, and I came to the zoning meeting, and it's a sad day, supposed to be rezoning for adult club, a strip club. My question is, the 643 students at Linda, we're talking about Roswell students, Matthew or Markham got torn out for a strip club. Harvey got torn out for a, from a strip club. If you vote on this, what is it going to do to our neighborhood? Have anybody thought of that? What about our business? Have anybody thought about that? You say it's rezoning into an area that's out of, out of the way? No. They still have to ride through here. We already let go so many offices, we don't have money to pay for offices. Who's going to patrol that? Who's going to patrol that? No one. I have a problem with that. Mayor Jones, I have a problem with that. A big problem, with the zoning of the strip club or adult club. Secondly, my next problem is last agenda of last month, we talked about paying forty dollars for a site for people to sit on the commission board, on the board. So, if everybody that's going to be appointed, since we're not electing them, are they going to be paid? If that's the case, then everybody here needs a forty dollar check, because that's volunteer. My last, but not least, you stated up there, Mayor Jones, when you read the statement that y'all should not be campaigning on the board. You said there was no campaign, trustee Brown-Arino was not here. But yet, still, the report that trustee McGee gave was you was going to be walking the neighborhood. I want to see a report from you, trustee McGee, of what's going on in our town, and to over, well, public workers. Because every time Matt gets up, he gives a report, and you say, good job. And like trustee said, that's his job. He's supposed to give a report. And that's all I have to say.
Mayor Jones?
Let me bring this along.
Oh, is it two for this? I have, I'm sorry. How do you support? You already done that? No, no, go on. Okay. Good afternoon, everybody. So glad to see you all here. It's getting hot already. I, like former trustee Smith, saw the same observation on the appointee of Gerald Davis, even though it's a typo. But I don't understand this, and I'm standing to be a one of the mill in the village. Trustee Smith has served on that committee. And to her point, I will agree with her. She asked if he plays on this committee that in the fall after the election was over. It's your choice, and you're going to do what you want to do, but I think it's unfair. I also like to know that in our newsletters that you printed, it was all men, all department heads that were male. Now, in the past, trustee Smith had been in there, trustee Benson had been in there, and trustee McGee and trustee Ely, as in the room somewhere, because I've seen them, have been on there. But Mayor, come on, Jan Mathis is our financial director, female. You strongly encourage her appointment and for us to accept her. She's well qualified and has been set up by some of you on the board here. We have a food pantry that I'm told, and I visited last Wednesday, give us our food to the residents in the community from the 11:00. So, if you're unemployed, you don't have food, you can bring your driver's license over to me, give you some food. It's sad that we are not supporting our home. And I say that and I can back that up, because we tend to show a little bit of favoritism. The carp district always get their information up on the website. We're through with the village clerk, she gets hardly nothing. We have all of this carp and heads' photos out there. Hers is not out there, nor anything about the office of the clerk. The office of the clerk is a very important position. And if you go to any village website, you will see a photo of their village clerk along with duties and responsibilities and their accomplishments. I know that this year is almost up, but it is unfair that we have put personal feelings in the midst of running our village. And to me, that is unacceptable. I can't speak for trustee Judy Brown-Arino, because when I spoke to trustee Harper a while back, her picture wasn't up there, because neither was trustee Abraham there here now. Only this, I'm sorry, only trustee Abraham, I mean trustee Brown-Arino can explain why maybe her picture isn't up there. Maybe a choice, I'm not sure. I also would like to bring to your attention, Mayor, this village website, I don't know who you had designated the responsibility to maintain it and keeping it accurate, but it's in need of corrections and updating. Right now, you have a peer mentor program out there. Monday, the 23rd of April, today is May the 2nd. This is just information. The employment and employer services is out there. Monday, the 12th of March, we know when that was, it's still up there. That can be corrected. I took time to pull up the census today, because see, the census were published back in February of 2011. We have no information on our website, but we cite 2,000 information concerning the census. This is 2012. We have the 2010 census out there. Broadview currently has 7,932 residents that participated in that census report. In 2000, in the year 2000, we had 8,264. The website now says that in the year 2000, we had 8,466. Maybe there was some adjustments made to that. Finally, Mayor, I encourage you to put the Broadview Food Pantry on the website, including in the newsletters. This is a community sponsored organization. It's unfair, it's unfair to our community, being able to have free food that's available to them. I said finally, I stand corrected. The adult entertainment. I attended the zoning board meeting Monday, which was a public hearing that was posted in the newspaper. We didn't have the crowd that we have tonight for whatever reason. Two trustees came out. I don't know where the other four were. But they came back for the second, for the section of two. So, I want to say that on ordinance C, I am against. And ordinance E, and I don't know why C and E is separated, you mean they should have ran C and E. Take a look at it. I would also like to know, Mayor, in the newsletter in the web, you talk about how you do it to communicate things to the community. This, unlike any other thing that we probably have experienced other than unfortunately the storms of 2010, to me requires a town hall meeting. We have a right, in addition to not only having the right, our businesses and our surrounding community have a right to know in detail specifically what is adult entertainment and why does it come into our community? With 7,000 people, they're in Stone Park like fleas. We're not Stone Park. We're a small community, one in which all of you campaigned under of being family oriented. Now, it's a good place to live. How is this going to be a good place to live when you are going to allow such an establishment to come to a community that most people have frequent here to live because we are a good community? We have a good fire department, understand? We have a good police department, understand? Let's do something, let's do something right. You all are happy listening, but if you don't listen to us tonight, we will remember you in April of 2013.
Good evening, good evening, all. I'm the mayor and board, and blessed to be with you. Tell it in your profile, but I would just like to say that I believe you tried your very best to do the job. And I can recall this all came about looking back at when we first got three new people elected back at that time, trustee Jones, brother Ely, and brother Kim. And we were excited about it, because it was a new day in Broadview. We were bringing up the middle boys, but. And then we're blessed to, I was blessed to be involved with a snow on our different needs, with assistant Judy there, with Mayor Jones, brother Kim, people who were representing Van der Wijk. What's the best for Broadview to make it even up there? This is a new day, we're running on change. Brother Kim, I love you, I've been knowing you ever since. You grew up with us, you had a family. Brother Jones, I know you had the best of expectations for the business to come together from the north side to south side. And I know that's in your heart and lead the spirit. But I would like to ask you to give some thought and some prayer to this vote on item C and E. I would like you to help make the right decision for the community. That's what I would, I plead into you to please do that. I don't know all the details, I haven't seen the ordinance, so I can't speak to what it says, but I would suggest maybe you want to consider having a town hall meeting and making us all aware of the conclusion to complete ordinance. It's only a change. And if we need the high rights legal people to explain the benefits and non-benefits to us, we are good listeners. And most of us probably understand, tell you not to whisper, that's in the light of talking. We're good listeners. We don't have to understand. That's that terrible, like, I love it, brother. But I'm not sure. But what I'm saying, I don't mean it, just get it off my chest so you can vote against and not sit down and shut up. I understand. But I always, I still love all of them. But even, I would like you to please consider that, that over the years, I've been blessed to be just a seventy-one, and this has been a family oriented community. It's been about the children, the families, the maintenance of the home. And we've always been in a position where we've actually increased the value of our homes. We have been able to decrease, we've organized as the economy has a bearing now, but we certainly don't need to add, add an entertainment center here that would even bring me fault down. You're truthful, I've children seeing them up there on TV, doing the music day here, and they're out there looking for them. So, we're good on you, friends, and the village will be. So, please consider it, children, and think of all those who considered you when you were growing up in this area. Please, please. And I believe all of you, men and women of faith. So, through your faith, I ask you, is that pray about it and allow the Holy Spirit or whatever, raise a faith, to lead you and guide you and do the right thing for the people of the community, for this community, for the people of Broadview. Not the right thing for the business people that's coming in and just to make some money. When they'll make the money, they're the best to make the money. And what happened to us, we're losing money on our home values, we're losing money on our church, which is right there. So, please, thank and try of the Village of Broadview, the Village of Broadview only. And if you would consider giving us a town hall meeting, we can all come out and get some, if I understand what we deal with, we certainly appreciate that. And all I have to say is this sound, but as the young lady said, keep it high. April is on. April is on, keep it high. You know, they say, he has risen. So, long as the community has to wake up, right now, we might be cycle C. But between now and April, we might wake up. Y'all still be on prison. Y'all wish for a better life. Y'all catch me up, you guys.
Naomi Caldwell, how you say your name?
Yes, Naomi Caldwell. And I'm a member of Broadview Baptist Church. And part of our mission is to bring healing into our, into our area. We have to get to a point in our lives where we soul search our own hearts and not be so concerned about votes or impressing people, because we lie out every night, we have to think about ourselves, and we have to listen to our own hearts. And so, we ask you, please consider. Don't worry about the fellow people that you're working with. Soul search your heart. And I'm sure when you think about your own children, and I know you are the very best for them, think about them. And think about if you want your children to be a part of a strip club, would you want one evening to see your side of your daughter here having a good time? And I'm sure as a parent, you would not want that. And so, we're here to ask you to please consider, because we love this community, our church works so diligently with the community, with the police department, and it's been wonderful. And we're working with you guys, and we want to work together, because we know the old saying says, it takes a village to raise a child. And if we go back to the old way, when our grandparents and our great grandparents stood off of righteousness, maybe they weren't as intelligent as we supposedly are today, but they believed in doing the right thing. So, if we could just get together, lay all those other things aside, we can join together and make this Broadview community the best place in the world to live in. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm also a member of Broadview Baptist Church, and I along with, I believe, most of the people in the room are against the ordinance, I mean, the measures listed on the ordinance in C and E. C is repartialing of land so that they can put the strip club in, and E is actually a strip club. So, we're, I and others are totally against that. I want to give you like eight reasons, and then one additional reason why we don't need a strip club. The Village of Broadview is a family oriented community. We do not want our children exposed to adult entertainment in Broadview. The Village of Broadview, Village of various religious denominations, adult businesses are not appropriate for residential community or for existing commercial, industrial, or retail businesses. Prospective developers may be interested in investing, or prospective companies who may be thinking about relocating to Broadview may now reconsider because they do not want their businesses located next to an adult business. Established businesses in Broadview may now decide to leave because of the potential of rezoning for adult businesses. Because once it starts, it doesn't end. It's a slippery slope. Once you start bringing them in, others are going to follow. We do not want Broadview to become a place where there can be a potential for increased crime, we know it's coming, or front the high additional illegal, additional income from illegal activity. The stickups, the dope. We don't want our property values to decrease. With the economic downturn which occurred in 2008, I lost thirty-five percent equity in my home. Thirty-five percent overnight. Insurance company told me that if adult businesses come to this community, you're going to lose even more. So, you'll be way upside down. I now owe more of my own now, with just about as much as when I bought it. That was eleven years ago. Bringing in adult businesses, adult strip clubs will not help my own properties at all. We do not want our homeowners or auto insurance to increase, because it's going to be car vandalism, car theft. We ask that you quash this, nip it in the bud, throw it away, dismiss it. Last but not least, the word of God tells us not to trust in uncertain riches. When you start opening up adult strip clubs, that's an uncertain rich, because with the economy, folks are not going to have a whole lot of money to spend. You'll still have some fools that will go there. But, it's uncertain, because you're going to, your board, this village, will premise their budget on the income in that strip club, the taxes and what have you. When those are not coming, because people are not going, because the economy has gone down, because crime has come in, because property values have went down, then you're going to want to start us with increased taxes and fees. Quash this now. You have an opportunity to make a statement. Stand up, be men and women of your calling, and quash this now. Thank you very much, and that is all.
Ms. Verna Williams.
I'm looking at this consider for ordinance, and I'm wondering, it seems like there are a complication here. And I'm wondering if all of these people have license for these jobs to be, especially the building commissioner and someone's board, do they have that license?
No, but carry on.
And then I go over to ordinance C and E. I'm ashamed of you people running this toward this table. You know what kind of business you raised there. You were raised in this neighborhood.
All right. You already know. Go ahead.
So, I wouldn't even bring this up. This is a lot of young neighborhood, children, they don't want children in this. They don't want this in this neighborhood at all. So, please consider, thanks for knowing.
Sanja, I'm sorry.
No problem. I have, resident of Bellwood, who's part of Vice Township, who's also part of fully impacted by the decision to create one of the adult entertainment center, I have C and E. I have lived in Broadview for twenty-five years, that's my mother. And so, I was a little concerned about the fact that the Village of Broadview would even consider the possibility of bringing adult entertainment slash strip club, just in this club, this is in my neighborhood. I was concerned, because I know the Village of Broadview has been often a very family friendly environment, one that has little league clubs and park districts and libraries. And so, I was concerned about who would even consider something of this nature. I was concerned more importantly about the fact of what would a strip club contribute to the community? When I think about education and the struggles that our children have continued to have as relates to good grades, and you want to bring in something that will have such an adverse impact to education. The fact that it brings nothing culturally to our community, it does not enrich us at all. Tell me how, for a strip club, a prostitute, an adult person, enriching our community? Normally, it brings nothing to enrich the fiber of our community at all. Economically, strip clubs, gentlemen, prostitution rates have tended to take things out as opposed to putting anything in. Also, we have to think about the fact of the impact from our real estate perspective. I too have been impacted adversely by our economic time, and as, as watch my taxes go up, and my property values go down. I have lived in Broadview for twenty years, I live in Bellwood over eleven years, I'm only twelve. Also, we have to think about the impact from the fact that if I understand correctly, today, while you are struggling with making sure that they have enough police protection today, and how will we be able to handle that? If you have a strip club, because it will adversely impact you. Statistics show that there are higher incidences of crime, there is a higher incidence of drugs, there is a higher incidence of pornography, there is a higher incidence of prostitution, specifically underage prostitution. Sex offenders and pedophiles. Now, I know there are lots of those around today, but I can imagine the number that will start to come into this community as a scare game. Also, we have to think about the fact that, yes, it is a very difficult time for businesses to have. And Broadview is having an adverse impact to that as well, just like Bellwood and Westchester and Hillside, but you don't see Oakbrook getting this strip club. You don't see Old Park getting this strip club. You don't see Oak Park getting this strip club. You don't see Broadview Park getting this strip club. Why do I know township? So, I wonder then, hmm, somebody must have brought this idea to their minds. I can't imagine who, God forbid, it was in their view. I don't have children, but I do live in this community. And I do care about what happens in and around this community. I'm an active member of Broadview Baptist Church. I care for my children and I care for the children around here. I would pray that you assert your hearts. Search your hearts. And have some essence of moral fiber in you. To decide if this is where you live. And is this what you want in your community? Is this what you want to see to enrich your community? I beg to differ. Thank you. I'm sorry, I gotta warn you guys first, we're back house. So that's why you get, what you get from us. That's my mom, that's my sister, I'm here in three hats. One, that's how many times I've had a pirate. You are two. And so, because of that, all my travels, which has been a lot, my mom. Anyplace I'm laying, I say I don't provide some township. Because I'm here as a citizen of Providence Township, because I live in Delaware. Once people recognize where I was from, so I follow someone over here. I lived in New Orleans for years. I had no intention of bringing Storyville with me, in case it went under the Storyville list. Called Red Light District. I had no intention of bringing that back up here with me, so. With that being said, as a Providence Township pirate, to come back home, and I know it's scary right now, seeing how the economy has practiced. But we know the syphilis problem. We'll see it all coming back again. Our president is not drinking. He knows he's talking now. That brings me to my other hat, while I'm here. You're reaching, looking for business. And I know, all communities are. You gotta be concerned, as my sister said, the impact of your sister communities. Because we know, okay, American flag is on, war horn, allied band line. But it doesn't mean it's over yet. So what you're gonna have to think about, third capacity, business. How do you get it and how do you bring it to Broadview? How do you beat your sister communities to get that business? But how do we get a Providence Township, right, Mr. Wood? Because the judge comes to all of us here, no matter if they all have it in Broadview, Brookfield, Rock River Side, Delos Park. But you wanna get it first. You wanna do, like the governor of Mississippi did. You wanna make sure that you get that Nissan plant where Louisiana gets it, or Florida. Am I correct? So what do you do with that? Well, I invite you to think about all of the current opportunities that are going on right now. There are a lot of small businesses, they're looking for a home. They're looking for a place to see. But you're gonna have to step outside of Providence Township, outside of Broadview, go into the city, visit some of these community bands, shake hands with some of these people who are looking for a place to put their business. They're looking for tip money. They're looking for some tax exemptions, just to get something. And the good part is this. Being in business, water, sewer, pipe, and sugar, that's what I do. They're coming back through overseas. They're looking for houses to put their plants. Is it gonna be Broadview? Or would you rather have, as Brother Mother says, chance money? Or would you rather know that twelve months out of the year, two shutdown months later, you got million people working, number one? And you're producing a product that we all have to use every time we flush our toilet and water is clean. Search your heart for real business. And I can tell you this, baby. You don't have to reach in the air and think that you have to bring something in that's going to have another impact on your community and on all your sister communities. Or your families. Because you can't contain, come on. You may believe that you can, and say, "We're just gonna put it over there and we don't have to think about it, it's on the other side of the highway, we're driving this way." You cannot contain it. I think the best thing, and it will be the bottom line, is when they made a fairly plan for all the families, that they wanted nothing to do with what, with drugs. Because they know they could not contain it. And I'm saying the same thing to you today. So search for business, for the real business. Because it's coming back to our shores and they're looking for homes. Now, I'm gonna give you, it's not inside drinking, but I'm gonna say, star pot, go in the pool. That's it, we're back house.
Hi. Um, thanks. First of all, regarding, uh, and I know that was on the last agenda, regarding the forty-dollar payment for the evil serving on the zoning board. I disagree with the fact that our village is in tight financial straits. I think that those of us who serve on boards at one time or other, and I'm a member of the Fire Police Commission and very happy to do it. I think that we should be volunteers. If that's, you know, if you wanna serve on board, you should be a volunteer and do it out of the goodness of our heart. I care about this community, I've been a resident here since nineteen forty-nine. That's sixty-three years, just before my sixth birthday, we were here. And, and, you know, I love this community with all my heart and soul. And it's one of the reasons why I am thrilled and honored to be a member of the Fire Police Commission to help this community maintain the standards that it has and, excuse me, regimen that I saw when I came here and has continued to go along over the years. So that's one thing, to reconsider payments, I don't think it's appropriate. And second of all, I believe that many of these here have a misunderstanding about the items on the agenda regarding the zoning ordinances. Unfortunately, in today's day and age, people, we do not have the luxury of saying that we cannot do something here and have it upheld in court and law. I served on a future planning committee. And we had extensive talks about the necessity for having a designated area for adult use. Did I want that? Well, I want that in my community where I've lived for sixty-three years, no. I do not want that. But we have to have something like that. And I understand there is a law, and otherwise, so. Because otherwise, we can be sued. Now, when we set it up on a future planning committee, we put it in an area where it was not impinging on any residents, on any parks, on any school, or on any church. However, the prior administration of which, there are several board members here, saw that they could change that for a location that was impinging on another community's residence. And that was close to school districts and closer parks. And those board members who were on the board at the time, none of whom are there, they voted, they voted to move that zoning area that was mandated that we had to have. Because we are mandated to follow the laws and regulations of the state of Illinois. And the state of Illinois states specifically that you can have, that you should have a specified adult use area, or you can be sued. And we have been sued for a number of other reasons. And if we say, "No, you're not gonna have a permitted use of it," you know that adult uses could be set up next to your home, next to your church, next to your school, next to your park. And do you want that to happen? Do you wanna open up that door so that adult use could be anywhere? But they wanna change it and put it into a specified area. Now, are they saying anywhere on the zoning ordinance that they're going to open it up to what you have been stating here as a specific use? No, I don't see that in here. All this zoning ordinance is doing is stating that they have to have that. The next step from that is if a business comes in and is wanting to put that business in, that's when you come here and that's when you make your voice known. Because that's when you can stop it. You have to understand that we have to do certain things in order to fit in with what the laws are now and what the rules are in order to prevent legal action against your board, against us, this community. And that's what we have to try to do. And I hope that you think seriously about that. This is not saying we're bringing in a business. This is not saying that a business is starting here tomorrow. This is saying that we're putting this in an area that is away from all of our residences, away from our schools, away from our parks, and away from all of our churches. And this area is not easy to find. Now, do you seriously think that a business is going to move to an area that they can't get to easily and that people can't come to easily? I don't think so. I think they're very smart, do they go ahead and approve of these ordinances? I didn't. I was here for the zoning papers. I didn't mean considering some ordinance establishing comprehensive adult entertainment licensing standards. That means that it has to fall within the guidelines of the state of Illinois. It's an area, it's a label number. It's an area that's intended to be a necessary area.
Mr. Berry, is it more of a word? Think that by your policy, there's no questioning in between the numbers of the public?
You know what, you know what, Mr. Turner, and I understand that. Thank you, Mr. Gordon. But I want to give him a lot of latitude here in a lot of ways because of the seriousness of township and head. And for the record, and I, and I don't normally respond at this point in time during the board meeting. And then, most of you haven't been to a lot of board meetings. But let me say for the record of all of you, I'm in opposition to a full, unquote, adult use of any type of, that's for record. I campaigned on it the first time, I campaigned on it the second. I don't think any member up here on the board is in favor of adult use within boards of Broadview or even neighboring townships by township. That's not the goal of this particular ordinance, that's not why we're here. If in fact, uh, we were trying to do that, I wouldn't go into the extreme measures that I gave when I first came to spend additional legal fees trying to defend it, defend the village of Broadview, because of this type of entity. We changed the legal council. We changed the entire strategy and litigation with the current issue with adult entertainment. This ordinance puts us in a position for future situations. We're already on one now, that we have to fight. Uh, because we were not in position to fight appropriately and perfectly. So now we have got to put ourselves in a position to be able to battle something like this going forward in the future. And no, we're not trying to solicit adult entertainment, we're not trying to bring adult entertainment. All this is, is to, just Gordon's, uh, uh, point and attorney's point is to position the village in accordance with the law. And that is what the issue is. I will say this, the zoning hearings were upside. They were published in the paper, they were posted out there. But because it's such a sensitive area for everyone here, uh, I'm gonna, uh, going through the course of tonight's meeting, we're gonna address it. And prior to taking action on it, we're gonna have a town hall meeting because I believe that you all should be involved. I believe that you all have absolutely have a say in what we do. And I believe that we need to do what you want us to do. But you guys need to, uh, first get educated on the law and the reason for the necessity of having a, a location such as this designated a front, which limits a business such as this to a specific territory where they can go. Absent that, it ends up next to a Catholic church, to what someone spoke to earlier today. Because there is no delineation on where they've got to go. It's not dictated to them where they can and cannot go. So it ends up next to a church. The reason that it's down the street and around the corner from Broadview Baptist and not too far from the school in Bellwood right now, where they're trying to go right now is because of the absence of such documentation within the village. But because you guys have got the concern and because you wanna have the dialogue, and I have no problem, as a matter of fact, I'm invited and I'm glad you're here. Because it gives us an opportunity to understand exactly where the village is. And I already knew where you were, because that's where I'm at. And I live here and I like a lot of rest. I'm a buyer for sure. I'm a rated from Roseville, I've been here since nineteen sixty-two. And I understand. So, trust me, folks, I, and I don't think any other member of this particular board is trying to solicit or invite any type of adult entertainment here. So for tonight, we're going to, uh, take some types of action and, and move along with process. But before we actually address the adult entertainment issue, my suggestion to the board here, uh, and they're listening now, is to have a town hall meeting to let you guys speak your minds, speak freely. But also get educated on what's going on and why we're doing, uh, some of these things. And why we're doing the things we're doing. Because we're in, in court right now, because we're in litigation, I can't get into a whole lot of details about a lot of stuff because it would take the, the court case. But we've changed our strategies in the courtroom. There's a lot of things that we're doing to defend the village of Broadview from this exact type of entity. So, trust me, your best interests are, are, are our best interests. We are acting on your best interests at heart. If, if not, we wouldn't be spending your money to fight this case, to, to fight the situation, to prepare ourselves for future litigation or for future entities trying to come within the village of Broadview and Broadview. So trust me, as it relates to that particular item on tonight's agenda, you know, I will ask the board members to make a motion that we take that until a later date. Okay? Is that fair to you guys?
Just so there's a little bit of background here, you know, I would maybe mention the fact that Providence doesn't have this type of permitted use. Actually, the ordinances in Bellwood, Hillside, Berkeley, and, uh, and Westchester, all four of those have zoning for adult use.
Well, that's what I'm saying, you guys gotta get educated for that, what's going on.
As an adult use is a permitted use, so. The, the interesting thing is, I, I, I feel terrible that you all were not at the zoning meeting. Uh, where we went through this, we had actual experts testifying to all of us. And the people that advised you tonight should have, should have really come and told you beforehand to come to the zoning meeting where we have this public here. Now, the mayor doesn't have to do a town hall meeting, but he's, he's suggesting that just so you can hear again what we discussed at the zoning, which was a public meeting. And that's exactly what it is, so we want to make sure there's no misconception. The people that told you to come here, told you to come here too late and misconstrued based on all your comments on what actually happened at the zoning meeting. This Gordon was at the zoning meeting, did a nice job of articulating what exactly was being discussed at that time. And it would have been far more understandable as to why this process is moving forward. So, I just wanna make sure everyone understands that, that process. So that in the future, the public hearing is not at the board meeting, it's at the zoning meeting. That's just how Illinois law operates. So, all your comments could have been on the record and in the court track, I mean, in the transfer to the zoning meeting, if you would have come at that time. So, be very careful when people alert you to, to that. You know, contact the village, you know, well in advance of that, uh, so that we can explain that process. If they were told you to come to the zoning period, you would have full access to all the experts, all the zoning board, myself, you know, other attorneys that were here. And it would have been very far more fruitful. So I just wanted to make sure that you are all aware of that in relation to, uh, you know, how, how the Providence Township actually. Anybody that comes forward on planning for adult uses does it the same manner. This is not, we didn't make this up. We did it as we went along and followed some of the other structures on it, including the ones we did for the township.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Uh, I, I know that some of you may want to have further comments, but we do have a board meeting that we must get to tonight. So rest assured that I'm sure that most of you were here about the adult use issue. That was probably the most critical concern of everyone in the room. Uh, for those of you that are in Bellwood, uh, please look back into this. People have a note out on, on whether we're gonna have the town hall meeting. For those of you that are in Broadview who are diverse, go over to the altar and let you know about the town hall meeting, to make sure that everyone's aware that we're gonna have the discussion. Because it's, it's important to you, it's important to me. Okay? So with that being said, I'm gonna ask the person to move along to the head up.
Attorney, one more question. Is it possible we can have all those experts here?
We're gonna have, oh, no, we're not gonna do it, but we're gonna be prepared. Well, yeah, the experts here, we'll have the three or four attorneys that were here and, and everybody. So that you get your questions answered and you get some real solid good information on exactly what we're doing. You know, there's, there's no, there's no mystery to, to what it is. But you need to, to know the background and the history and, and why we're doing what we're doing. So it's absolutely not solicitation or us trying to set it up so we can, you know... So it's absolutely not solicitation or us trying to set it up so we can get adult use here and stuff. So, we will get that reality. And we will also, to trust these point here, uh, get it out for the next time we have zoning issues. It could potentially be, uh, that critical, that important to the board meeting.
We're also here to get information on all this, for the audience actually to read.
Absolutely, absolutely. You, you'll get a hundred percent disclosure on what's going on with the exception of other quarters. Matt Kirk?
I don't know, three considerations.